We're in a virtual forum, so let's just bear patience as we go through this. So, welcome everyone and thank you for joining today. I'm going to call our Committee of the Whole from, for November 16th to order. Do acknowledge that we are broadcasting virtually from the territory of the South Nation. Counsel, I'd like to thank you all for supporting the resolution to meet virtually for November. I think what we can do is just reassess going forward on a month-to-month basis, what that will look like in the coming months. As we all know, there is a rapid rise in cases as we head into the respiratory season, and this is of great concern. We all have loved ones in our bubbles and we want to keep everyone healthy and safe, so we can celebrate together when we can in the years to come. As you'll note, our local government has been following the health orders, and Dr. Henry has been patient steadfast in providing factual information on how we can all endure this pandemic. So let's do it all together. Let's encourage and support one another, and remember to always wash your hands and to please wear a mask. So Counsel, I'd now like to draw attention to the agenda. We are in Committee of the Whole, so what I'm thinking here is we'll go through each item. I'm going to go through it alphabetically in accordance with who's here today, and then rotate to the next person and sort of follow that sequence for questions. And then, once the resolution is forwarded, it only requires one mover, and then we would, once a resolution is live, even with the one mover, then all we can really discuss is the resolution in front of us. So that would be the time for any commentary, of which everyone has up to five minutes. But the question period should really come before we put a resolution forward. So on that note, our first item here is Item 3, which is Ministerial Order M192, and that is that the Committee of the Whole is holding this meeting without members of the public in attendance. Under Ministerial Order M192, its council chambers cannot safely accommodate the unknown number of public participants wishing to attend. And that Council, and that the Committee of the Whole is committed to ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability through the submission of written comments and the provision of live and broad recorded broadcast of the meeting. So look for a mover for this, please. Moved by Counselor St. Pierre. Any comments? I think we understand what this one is all about. So all those in favor, please? And I think what we'll need to do, just because of this screen, is what I'll do is call for opposition first, and then we'll, because anything would be doomed to be in favor, and that might be easier if I can't see everyone's hands, but that did carry. Okay, Item 4 is approval of the agenda, and that is that the agenda for the November 16th, 2020 Committee of the Whole be adopted as circulated. Do I have a mover? Moved by Counselor St. Pierre. Counselor Betos, did you have a comment or question on the agenda? Nope? Sorry, you're muted.
I'm sorry, there's a delay. My hand went up and then it took another two seconds for it to show on the screen, so I was just...
You were just...
I was gonna move it.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, this is, this is the unique part of the virtual piece. Alright, so all those, although, anyone opposed to the recommendation to approve the agenda? Okay, so I'm going to go that that is carried unanimously. Okay, we're next into our report section, and there is public input to follow each item. I'm just going to ask our corporate officer, though, do we have any members of the public participating at this time?
No, Your Worship, we do not.
Okay, thank you very much. So the first item up is 5.1. This is the Evacuation Route Planning Project Report, EBCM CEPF Grant. And I'll turn this over to staff, please, to present the report.
Thank you and good afternoon, Committee and Your Worship. This is a simple report that has a recommendation for Committee of the Whole just to accept this evacuation route planning project and all the documents for information. I can provide a brief summary here and highlight some of the key components before receiving any questions. So, Emergency Program Staff received a $25,000 grant that began in November of 2018. There are really two key components with this grant. One was SUCC-specific evacuation route planning, and the other one was through the Regional Emergency Management Partnership. $19,000 were dedicated specifically to the SUCC planning project, and the remaining dollars were utilized, $6,000, in partnership with other municipalities in the Greater Victoria Regional District. The deliverable with the regional one was a Hazard Risk Vulnerability Assessment Report, as well as a deliverable. That was a database tool to help drive evacuation calculations within the region from one community to another community. The report on the SUCC-specific outcomes looked into key hazards within our region. This includes tsunamis, wildfires, storm surges, dam breach scenarios, flooding, hazmat scenarios, etc. The consultant was Smart Risk Control, and those consultants facilitated a series of phone calls and meetings with key staff members and other agencies. It's included planning staff, EIS staff, the emergency amateur radio group, BC ambulance service, the local members there, SUCC Emergency Program Fire Department staff, our neighborhood emergency preparedness group, RCMP First Nations, and Wanda Fukasar. There are really six tasks that were part of the actual project. Included building a plan, conducting research, and planning sessions. And one was, as well, was develop a new call center plan. We advanced our existing evacuation guidelines further within a new appendix that is attached in these documents. Some of the report findings looked at other things as far as new opportunities with other secondary evacuation routes. As most of us know, SUCC is challenged with one way in and one way out. Of these routes were some considerations, some opportunities where we had already mapped out a secondary route out of Sun River. This is from Helgerson Road into Sun River. And in a local state of emergency, we'd be looking at, within 24 hours, being able to tactically bring people out of Sun River if we had to. Other opportunities looked at in Ocean Point and Sun River as far as bringing people out and having another way to get them out to Pike Road, whether it was by foot or utility vehicle. And of course, there's other opportunities that we looked at beyond what's already existing in the suburban Nettle Road, coming down Sukkang Road to Gillespie Road. As far as the key documents, I would focus attention on Appendix C. Appendix C is really an expansion of our existing emergency plan. And in there, there's a series of different scenarios that we go into detail with each kind of neighborhood focused in some mapping components that's giving us indication of how the logical flow of getting people out and traffic flow would happen. That really concludes the kind of high-level overview of this evacuation plan. I've had some questions come in, you know, regarding, you know, tsunami modeling and some of the regional tsunami projects that have been done recently. And I'm happy to take any questions and do my best to answer any specific questions that we may have had from public right now.
Thank you very much, Chief Mount. So go through this in order here, and starting off with Counselor Bateman. And I'll, I'll come back to you for a second time for questions, Counselor Bateman. I know that is hard to do first, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Chief, for this report. So I guess SUCC Emergency Call Center, what, what kind of requirements, what sort of grants will you chase to get something like that?
At this stage, it's not so much having to chase any further grants. It's more improvements to our existing operation center. This would be, you know, aligning staff and making sure the operation center is set up adequately with a phone system and a phone tree system as well, and an ability to make sure that we can focus on getting and reaching out to certain residents and certain community and as well as accepting inbound calls. Our current infrastructure is likely just limited to, you know, one or two people dealing with a couple of calls that come in. And it was really identified as an opportunity to improve or you'll see as a weakness for evacuation planning.
Okay, I see you identified five different emergency, potential emergency situations. You didn't include earthquake. Is that because that is such an unpredictable outcome?
Yes, so other scenarios really would be encapsulated with an earthquake. So, for example, tsunami, the worst-case scenario type of modeling really has to do with a 1 in 2,500-year event where we'd have a subduction zone quake that's giving us a certain amount of time to plan and get boots on the ground and deal with evacuating in certain neighborhoods. So that would be one kind of item that is really touching on an earthquake. So if we have a tsunami coming in, we're really dealing with an earthquake situation as well.
Okay. Knowing that that it's been, what, 300 years since the last great quake in our, our region, and that we're due for one, it's great that we've got these, these plans happening. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Betos is up next?
Okay, anyways, thanks, Chief, for this report. I think it's very well done. The only question I have is, in the event that we ever did lose the bridge, is there a location somewhere that we could put a Bailey Bridge across the SUCC River? Either farther up, or I guess it's not farther down, it'd be in the basin then? Is there anything like that? Just, just off the top of my head?
Yeah, you know, in my, my past experience, I've dealt with situations similar to this where all of a sudden we had no further road access. And in the event of something to this magnitude, we'd be looking at provincial support. And depending on the situation, if it means getting key critical supplies into the core area in coordination with other emergency programs in the province, we'd probably be looking at how quickly we can reestablish, you know, a connection through the bridge. We'd also be looking at airdropping supplies and barging in on supply as well. So it'd be a multitude of different things that would be coordinated through the Emergency Operations Center throughout the operation and planning staff and in coordination with the province as well. So no, we didn't get to the granular level of what specifically would be utilized to reconnect and rebuild a bridge, but we looked at all types of kind of opportunities on how we can make sure we're connecting to the people and getting critical infrastructure repaired and items in and out. That helps answer that question for you, Counsel.
Yeah, yeah, I was just thinking farther up SUCC River Road and Phillips Road. River narrows, and to me, you could put a Bailey Bridge across, and then you could connect Phillips Road with SUCC River Road and at least have an emergency route through there. But you're the guys planning. I just threw that up there. I wasn't sure if that'd been looked into or not.
Yes, could help expand on that question, and you saw as an opportunity there as far as getting people out of our heavier populated suburban neighborhoods like Sun River. It's one of the things myself and the deputy identified, you know, years ago, and we GPSed a route from Helgerson Road into Sun River. And only in a state of emergency would we do that and be able to probably establish, you know, a flow of traffic if we had to within 24 hours. And I've seen that happen before in emergency management where, you know, we do things like that in a state of emergency. We'd work with the local resident more to, you know, make sure that we have an agreement in place. But there's opportunities for advanced planning, you know, as far as looking at, you know, making something more permanent and, and future growth in that area, right?
Okay, thanks.
Counselor La Genes is next?
Nothing further at this time, other than thank you for, for the work that you're doing with this. It looks good.
Okay, Counselor St. Pierre?
Thank you. I should note that I seem to have a significant lag. It might be because I'm on Salt Spring Island right now, but especially from Counselor Betos, but I'll, I'll work through it. So I got a few small... Okay, so my, I was, the chief was coming in nice and clear, but everyone else is a little bit laggy. So I was just curious about the, a couple of questions. Curious about the notification teams that go out to the community and within, I think, 60 to 90 minutes canvas maybe 30 homes. How many teams will, and I, this, this may have been in the report, but I didn't catch it. Would you be using existing neighborhood volunteer organizations and would there be training associated with that?
That's a good question, Counselor. So the report provided us an actual table that supports us how many boots on the ground would be necessary as far as getting proper notification out, and I thought that was a good outcome from it. The consultant did a good job with all the, the report and documentation that was provided there. We talked about further training and getting, you know, the right amount of people, depending on the scenario, how difficult that may be. But a lot of the discussion was with RCMP. Of course, the SAR groups would be involved if we could get them here. And then, you know, as far as the existing staff that we have here as well. So depending on the scale of the scenario, I think we're probably challenged with, you know, getting enough boots on the ground in a certain amount of time there. And the other thing we're looking at as far as notification is, we do have an agreement with the Capital Regional District, and they're improving their public access, emergency access notification system to a new program as well. And we're going to be, as far as a project in the next year, getting more people to sign up onto the new software platform as well. So more training would be necessary. The pandemic kind of puts a little bit of a challenge on trying to do close training like we did back in 2018 as far as a full case scenario. But we'd likely, soon as this is all clear and we can get an annual exercise happening again, we'd end up focusing on some sort of evacuation component with our emergency scenario to make sure we get a better indication of what available resources we have in the community to help us with that.
Okay, the reason this came up is because back when we pre-COVID, when we had the conferences, it was made very clear, at least in one event that I went to, that the people within the community often know where the seniors are, where the people that are at risk may be, and are in the best position to actually find them, canvass them, and potentially jolly them out if they need to be convinced to leave in some way or other. Next question was, with regards to specifically the relocation of livestock, is there already a network in place with these body farms, and how, how far does that particular plan go? Have farms been notified, or how does that work?
I know as part of this project, the consultants did, you know, work and try and, and consult and contact some of the, the local farmers and looking at livestock and horses, etc. There's probably a little more work that needs to be done there as far as working with our, our volunteer groups there. I know there's other agencies like C-DART that can help there, and this is where our collaboration with our neighbors as far as identifying sites in our neighboring communities where livestock could go, or what we need to do on the emergency side if we're just kind of sheltering livestock in place as well and making sure that they have enough supplies. So kind of back to my last answer on a previous question is, a lot of it's based on the incident and scenario and working with the province and getting resources here as well. Evacuating livestock has quite a bit of challenges, but I've seen it work with emergency operations centers where that's a whole component of one of the sections. And they'll be focusing on that during an actual emergency to make sure that we're, we are, are serving those needs as well. I do feel that we need more work and planning on that, specifically certain neighborhoods as well.
Yeah, I would suggest that it's going to be reasonably difficult in some cases, especially when it comes to pigs, which are hard to move. I mean, they're, they're just powerful animals that weigh a whole lot, so I'm not sure. It was a bit of a wake-up call for, for me specifically, because I wouldn't know what we would do. We would probably have to shoot them, to be honest, which is kind of unfortunate. But that's, anyway, my next question was, in the case of dam breaches and flooding areas, are we expecting to basically update all the residents? Because, for example, in the case of a dam breach, I think there were 100 homes that would be affected. How much outreach is being done in terms of letting people know that they're, they are in a flood area in cases of dam breach, so they can make their own preparations? Is that already in place?
Yeah, that's, from what I understand, you know, the Capital Regional District has some requirements under acts and regulation. And, you know, they'll be communicating with us on, you know, what the extent of connecting with those residents will be. Right now, there's an existing plan that was done, you know, about a decade ago now that is outdated, and it is getting updated. And you'll likely be hearing more, you know, in the coming years as far as the outreach to those people.
Wonderful, thank you. And this is a little bit tongue-in-cheek, but in terms of Sun River, if there was an emergency and you sent in the bulldozers, is there possibility of keeping that route open and building on it? Because, man, I sometimes think it would be bad, but that's, you don't have to answer that. It's a...
I think, you know, the last time I walked that route and I met with the property owner, there's an expectation that we'd probably work on a memorandum of understanding or something like that as far as, you know, being able to access it for emergency. There's a verbal cooperation there, and it allowed me to walk the property and map it out there. But there's more work that needs to be done to kind of finalize that. And then, of course, working with district staff on what challenges there would be and all the requirements and everything that needs to be done before something more permanent would be done.
Thank you very much. And I'll add my thanks to everyone else, because this is a really wonderful document as far as I'm concerned. Thanks.
We're pleased with the report ourselves.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. So just back to myself, I'm just wondering, so what comes next? So after, right now, the recommendation is that this would go to council and be received for information. I have a few residents that have asked, they recall back in the day, we used to have some tsunami warning signs in some areas that were put up and then taken down. We did have an event a few years ago, and so some folks that remember that are asking, like, where should they be going? Where are they supposed to muster? And are we going to be putting up some sort of signage to direct folks throughout the community? So I'm just wondering what the, like, what comes after this?
So I've done a little bit of research here to help answer that question, and I do have Deputy Barney in that background. He did the research for me, and since he's one of our longest-standing staff employees here, he recalls back in 2007, February, March, that's when the signs went up. Then April 2007, they were removed from kind of a public outcry, perception only that it was not favorable to property values. I don't think there was anything that came as far as legitimate BC assessment being changed. In 2015, there was a motion again to have them reinstalled, and that has not been done yet, and I think one of the reasons were those signs were repurposed and new signs would need to be procured and put in place and go through that process again. Going back to the incident on January 23rd in 2018, you, you can recall the open house that was done like a week afterwards, and the information session on, on that, you know, was standing room only in the chambers, and it was really quite well-received. You know, there was some good discussion that happened, and we focused on the need for people to shelter in place. And what we learned out of that was dealing with significant misinformation out there. And since then, we're getting in front of that information. We've improved some of our social media connections. We now have a communications coordinator that can further support us getting in front of misinformation. We reinforce the, the need always to have boots on the ground. And in any kind of serious situation, we'd be end up using our, our amateur radio group to help us find those trigger points on what is happening and what, and who we actually need to do as far as advising people that sheltering in place is good here, but these people here need to actually go to a certain location in a muster site that we'd be identifying ahead of time. We learned from this that the educational impact of things still needs to be improved on. And we had lots of discussion as well as about, you know, how come we don't have sirens? And a lot of that came down to, you know, a community of, you know, 15,000 to 16,000 people that, where we may only have to be handling 600 to 1,000 residents, where the current modeling shows that the, the average tsunami wave activity would be about two and a half meters. A worst-case scenario of 2,500-year event would be about seven-meter event. So working on further education to advise residents that, yeah, you are an impacted zone, and you need to go to this place, and we give them the literature and the information ahead of time. There's lots of discussions still on the need for a siren, and nothing really materialized that, because it was kind of well-received on, on that, that we have an education component first that needs to be done, because we don't want to panic 15,000 residents and have them not knowing what to do, just arbitrarily putting a siren up. So that's kind of where, where things stand right now. We get lots of questions that come in, and people are well above 12 meters, 15 meters. Majority of our population are not impacted from severe tsunami waves, and our basin seems to, you know, show quite a good protection all the way to Billings Spit, where the worst-case scenarios are showing, you know, less than two-meter waves in the Cooper's Cove area there. So where to go from here further is further education opportunities, further staff training, further evacuation planning, and an annual exercise again, once it's safe with COVID, to actually work under real scenario, getting the community further involved. Hopefully that answers it, Your Worship.
That definitely does help. I think the, I recall the event, and you were very supportive of me when we did have the tsunami, non-tsunami, because of the amount of information that came flooding in that day. And just, I think now we're more connected, and just for counselors, we did have, there was an earthquake that triggered an event. And so what happened was residents who have family living in other places heard this news and then started phoning. So with good intentions, you know, some folks were up at four in the morning and then, you know, calling and, and going different places, and it turned out to be a non-event. But that's when we sort of realized, even throughout the Capital Regional District, everyone was doing something different. And that's what led to, there, we need to have a bit more coordination here. So, for example, we didn't evacuate, Machozen did, Tofino had to because of where they were. A squimout gets triggered by CFB, so I mean, even if the military is not mobilizing when they're out on the water, then they're fine, but then parts of Victoria were evacuating. So it was just a, a bit of a schmuzzle. And then we did have folks head to higher ground, and they were outside the fire department. So certainly in recent memory. But I do, and then since then, we have done some great events. In the summertime, we did one, we, a wildfire event was simulated. And interestingly, is a few days after that, the Tugwell Creek wildfire broke out, and thankfully, the wind took it further west. Otherwise, it would have come right through the areas identified in our community. So the chief really did have a crystal ball in putting all of that planning work together. So I, I think that, you know, sort of challenged staff to find ways to sort of keep the community education and awareness live, even with COVID. It would be some form of virtual presentation or with mapping or something, because while the pandemic is real and we're living through it, we could have another event happen at the same time, and, and it's worrisome should that occur. Just noting the event in Japan, which I'm very familiar with. The tsunami there triggered, certainly annihilated our sister city town, but also fires broke out because of all the gas lines that were ruptured, and you could just see whole cities burning. And so it, it, something, it does keep me up at night. But it sounds like everything is moving ahead as it's supposed to, so I don't want to be jumping ahead and doing something while you're still doing a lot of factual. Just getting the research and the planning work done first, I think, is very important. So that's all I have, but I'll go through, I'm going to ask counselors again, just if you have a question. Just say pass if you don't, so we can move through things. Counselor Bateman?
Okay, yeah, I, I remember that tsunami night in SUCC very well. We had a friend came by at four in the morning and knocked on our door. I subsequently signed up for the, what is it called? The PAMS, Public Alert Notification System. And I see on the district's Be Prepared, Not Scared website, there's a whole series of things we can do as citizens to, to, to get ourselves ready to match what's being done by the district. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Betos?
Yeah, basically a pass, other than I was evacuated from this location a few years back, and I know what that's like to go to a little triage center and have your little tag around your neck. But yeah, good stuff. Thanks.
Counselor La Genes? Counselor St. Pierre?
I will also pass unless you need someone to move the motion to receive the report.
Go ahead, please, Counselor St. Pierre. Yep.
I'll move for receipt of the report. I have to switch screens to see it proper, but...
Yep, that is that the Committee of the Whole recommend council accept the evacuation route planning project documents for information. Moved by Counselor St. Pierre. There's no second... There's no seconders. So would any, is there anything further on the motion? I'll just call the question then. Anyone opposed to receiving for information, say opposed. Okay, no one said opposed. So that carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your work on this, Chief, and, um, just encourage councillors to reach out if you have any further questions or comments on reach out to Chief Mount, uh, as we're still moving this forward to council. Okay, item next up is five point two. And that is our fire services protection bylaw. So I'll turn that over to staff, please.
Thank you. This report has three recommendations for the committee of the whole to consider. Uh, one is to review a selection of, uh, preferred options. There's four in total. And also to consider whether backyard burning should be permitted on statutory holidays. And if another one is to do some housekeeping where ten acres converts properly to four hectares. Summarize this report, council requested staff to look into air quality issues at the November eighteenth, twenty nineteen special council meeting. We presented a staff report on May nineteenth, twenty twenty. This report outlines several options for open air fires. And amendments are aimed to properly address some residents' concerns on looking at the issues pertaining to the negative effects of, uh, smoke in our community. Staff recommends that a more robust review of bylaw two nine two is done once a solid waste strategy business plan is being developed in the future. Previous action, council authorized staff to solicit, uh, public input. And it was shown to that care needed to be taken during, um, the pandemic time is not to be skewing any type of results. And also that changes should be considered without an alternative for managing waste properly. As we were still in the midst of a COVID nineteen pandemic with the second wave well underway right now, um, public engagement was not conducted. In the absence of this window of opportunity, we developed some minor amendments that, um, may immediately look at addressing some concerns, but still allowing burning to, um, uh, be done responsibly. This is really a balanced approach that we looked at here based upon our experience in two thousand and twenty and the need to look at, uh, health as a, uh, primary concern. Since October first, we've received twenty eight complaints where, um, emergency trucks had to roll out. We've had an average of ten inquiries a day and this resulted in approximately two hundred calls since October first in the time we're writing this report. Um, half of these calls were really people looking at, um, clarifying the regulations. And the other half was more about concerns of people, uh, burning and the smoke actually being a nuisance. Our current bylaw really allows for burning to be done outside of the sewer specified area on poor venting days. A total of twelve, um, residents also visited the fire station in person. And myself, I personally dealt with four major concerns where one resident has moved out already and three are in consideration of moving out because um, things aren't being done adequately enough from their perspective. So we do have venting problems, which is a primary, uh, issue within our district. And I'm going to get, um, staff right now to queue up a six second video that just shows what the basin looks like on a, a poor venting day, even though the skies look good. So this video was actually from, you know, open burning happening across the basin in Eastuk, but it gives you an indication in within Spit area in our basin on how even though a day looks clear, where someone's burning on a poor vending day, that the smoke is going right into, you know, our tourist area and to residents that live in the within Spit area. Last week, you may remember too, we had some very significant poor vending days. I think it was last Thursday where we had several complaints come in and, and the smoke wasn't clearing at all. It was actually settling down quite low. So we look at the, these complaints in two thousand and twenty from a, a different perspective. Um, since residents are spending more time at home, there is a heightened awareness that's resulting in more calls coming in. Two calls we received were by tourists, which is very uncommon. And they advised us that it was too smoky in Suk that, that they came for the day and they're now leaving. Due to the residual wildfire smoke we've had in the past four years, residents sort of are very concerned that they need a break from smoke and, uh, there shouldn't be any burning while we're having such wildfire activity and smoke in our community. The report on waste management is forthcoming and we're expecting operations staff to deliver something in, uh, December. So we're looking at minor amendments right now represented in this, uh, report that can be implemented just in the short term. Any future amendments would likely be coming forward depending on a waste management strategy and plan. The options we're looking at the committee of the whole to consider right now are deferring the start of open burning and ending earlier. This will allow summer spite in such cases where we do have significant wildfire smoke in our community, but still allows residents to deal with biomass waste on their property and conduct cleanup during several months. The venting index is a concern and we're looking at improving, you know, burning to be looking at times where it's good. Having a poor venting requirement, um, in certain areas has resulted in many calls of concern like we've seen in the video. Prohibiting burning on statutory holidays will limit some further negative effects of smoky air quality for residents who wish to actually go outside and enjoy their home weekend. We also look at it from a cost perspective here. We have a large scale response in the stat holiday that can impact us financially as well as bringing our paid on call members away from home on a statutory holiday day. So outline options for resolutions that is really to be looking at a balanced approach now, which will still allow residents to continue burning reasonably, but shorten the season and make sure that their quality and venting is always good. In reality, where we see open burning right now is, is problematic. And air quality is really on the forefront of our residents' minds as a priority versus the need to remove debris. Our recommendation as far as the four options from staff is option one, where we have a burning season from November first, April thirtieth, and good is the venting index requirement. Additional, um, consideration for statutory holidays is the other item and of course, a resolution for the housekeeping item here. The budget financial impacts would really be minimal. Uh, we, it can be managed as far as education to our residents here through existing department budgets. We do have frequently asked questions that come into the fire station. And one of them is, why is the issue, what is the issue with open burning? Why can't I burn? And we are constantly explaining that there's new provincial regulations with the open burning smoke control that has resulted in a means of trying to manage air quality. Suk is now in a high sensitivity zone with the province and this has impacted our class eight burns already. Why don't we prohibit open burning altogether? Well, we look at reasonable burning needs to be in place still as an effective way of reducing some fire hazard risks. The purpose of our open burden bylaw is really all about air quality, ensure that burning takes place to minimize that type of risk. With respect to strategic relevance, staff sees that excessive smoke and air quality as items that impact the environment negatively towards common action. That concludes my part of the report here and I'll take any questions as you see fit.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief, for the report and just for laying it out in this way. Um, no, I, I appreciate, um, and I, yeah, I don't have any questions that straightforward. So I'll go now starting off with councillor Betos. Any questions, please?
Uh, no, other than, uh, I like, I like the idea of, uh, November to April, uh, to be allowed to burning. Uh, I'd have to hear some more information before I gave an opinion on, uh, statutory holidays. There's two things there. One is people home want to enjoy the day, but there's also people at home doing yard cleanup uh, on those days as well. So, uh, I spit on that one, but, uh, lots to think about and it's nice that, uh, you're looking in, um, ways to mitigate this and find middle ground as opposed to an outright ban, which I would not be in favor of. So, uh, thanks, thanks for your work. Carry on.
Councillor Lajeness?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I guess it sounds like a lot of the complaints are coming from the Whiffon Spit and Billings Spit areas. Is that right? That the majority of the complaints?
That is correct. Even looking at the past four years, councillor, um, there's been advocates in each area for Billings Spit and the Whiffon Spit area. And there tends to be some issues with, um, no smoke settling. Um, and it even has more to do than open burning. It has to do with, uh, you know, wood burning appliances and the smoke settling at night there as well. So there is an issue in Whiffon Spit, um, more so at settling. And the Billings Spit has just been an excessive burning with, uh, kind of mixed, um, kind of use that we have out there.
Yeah, I guess, uh, is it repeat offenders as far as open burning goes or is it, is it, uh, just more random than that?
I would, uh, say that it has more to do than repeat offenders. It's just, uh, the amount of burning. Um, our bylaw staff is quite good on jumping and handling, you know, um, complaints and issues with repeat offenders. And we did recently address, um, you know, the burning of couches and garbage on West Coast Road that was creating a nuisance over a couple of months, I'm afraid. And that was handled quite well by bylaw.
Okay. That's it for now.
Councillor St Pierre?
Uh, thank you. Uh, so I appreciate that we can't really get into more robust burning bylaws until, uh, we're out of this crisis. I'm, uh, I'm actually in agreement with, uh, definitely in agreement with councillor Betos that I think that the November first would work. I would suggest that we do move to, uh, the improved venting conditions from sound things. That's a real issue. And, uh, I am curious, however, how do we, I mean, I know there was an education portion in your presentation, but how are we going to reach out to people and let them know what the venting conditions are or that they even need to inform themselves on venting conditions? So that'd be one thing. Uh, the other thing that you can maybe answer at the same time or afterwards, or just, uh, making a comment really, is that on statutory holidays, we also just have more tourists. And I think that if we don't want to impact poorly, uh, it might be in our best interest to be more and more careful at those times.
Yeah. So to answer that question there, um, as far as reaching out to residents, we do have the communications coordinator now that would be very supportive on, uh, getting messaging out. Um, the good news is that a lot of the inquiries that come in is it's on people's minds as far as air quality and uh, that's been a positive experience there that people are actually calling us, asking us what are their burning regulations and restrictions? So we can, you know, a multitude of, um, different types of, uh, you know, media information pamphlets, updating websites, social media. You, maybe we could likely get out to, um, residents and our first, um, experience with any changes would be, you know, boots on the ground, getting out there, working with, uh, bylaw fire staff that, you know, here's the changes and this is what it means now and, um, educating the public before, you know, finding them and, uh, working with as many media relation channels as well. There, I do have staff advise me that we, we recently got some more complaints up in the Mountain Heights Grant Road area. It's a regular area of, uh, of smoke, um, settling.
Thank you, Chief.
Councillor Bateman?
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, now I see. So we're, we're reducing, uh, burning days from eight months to seven months per year. So that's approximately two hundred days per year. And we're recommending, uh, these, these, the, the B C venting index be good on those days. Do you have stats, Chief? Uh, that tell us how many days on average annually, uh, rate as good?
I don't have those stats, like, council are in front of me, but that's something we could work on and acquiring with, uh, the province. Um, they do provide that information and I'm sure there could be some annual summary that, uh, uh, they could provide that shows in a certain area with the average, uh, good quality amount of days were. Uh, that could be something coming in a, a future report.
So for argument purposes, we can guesstimate probably a hundred days, um, per seven month season. Now I'm interested in your report back in May, you recommended a season of October first to April thirtieth, and I'm wondering whether, uh, your experiences this last month. Uh, encourage you to recommend November to April.
So yeah, looking back in the report here, we do have our recommendation that is starting on November first date to April. So that would be, you know, reducing it some, you know, a couple of months there. So.
No, Chief, I'm just, I'm looking back to your, uh, May nineteenth report and, uh, yeah, you, you've stated, um, on page two nineteen of today's agenda, uh, shorten the backyard burning season, October first to April thirtieth annually and remove May. I'm ju, I'm just asking this question to try to, to, to justify this November to April period, which seems entirely justifiable.
Hmm. But this, yes, I said in this report, uh, today, this, uh, really is focused on a twenty twenty experience. So, you know, things started up quite rapidly in October first and the phone started ringing more so than normal. There. And, uh, I think, um, from what we're seeing as well is, you know, quite a bit of, uh, good weather still in September and October for tourists. There's, is another factor that kind of came through staff, um, in discussion there. So, um, providing, you know, November first date still is providing enough months from our perspective here for people to deal with their yard waste.
And I guess in, uh, in relation to other C R D municipalities, our, our current status and this recommended status would still be quite liberal. You agree?
My response to that would be, uh, yes. And, you know, we're one of the few communities still that still allows burning. And I've seen further and further kind of restrictions happening with our, our neighbors as well.
And finally, I'm curious, um, when we do go out to public engagement for future amendments to this bylaw, what are some of the issues? Um, we may be, uh, looking at?
The first thing, councillor, that comes to my mind is there's a, a proper solid waste, um, management plan and ability for residents to deal with alternatives to yard waste. We may see less pressure, you know, on the amount of burning and, and less calls coming in and less nuisance complaints. Um, that's how we probably be looking at it from our staff perspective first. There, um, and if that's the case there too, then there's probably the ability for us to, you know, look at, um, different opportunities to have specific burning time, burning windows hours that are aligned with the province and things like that as well, right? So those are the other kind of things I foresee in the future that would end up coming in a future report. Yeah.
So th, thank you for such a thorough report. It was good to go back and see that the district on, uh, when we became a, uh, incorporation, we had one weekend per month was allowed in the October to April period. So we have loosened up considerably and this suggestion is going to return us effectively to the period of two thousand and eight to twenty twelve, before things opened up further. And, and just a, a comment around stat holidays, I think there's probably a total of five or six or maybe seven stat holidays in this recommended period. And, um, I, I think it'd be wonderful to just take a break. Just one, you know, there's still multiple days where people can organize and, uh, act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Betos?
Did you have any? I do actually have one more little comment, and that is, uh, is there a possibility uh, during the burning months, November to April, that we could put, uh, the venting index on our website? Is that an onerous thing? Uh, we have a communication person now would just be, uh, I think you probably get it for a few days in advance that people can go to our website and see what the, the venting index is for that day. I'm pretty sure you could just type in, uh, in internet and go get the vent in index, but I think specifically for Suk. Is that a possibility, Chief? Or is it just too onerous?
And speaking on behalf of our, you know, I T staff, I, I think there's means to kind of do something beyond just a simple hyperlink to a provincial site. You know, we could probably look at some, you know, other means of just getting it on our front page. So it's more visible.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I think that would be advantageous. It might save a few calls to the, for you guys. They can just look it up as they get it on the website. Just a thought. Thanks.
Yeah, we can even provide indicators through social media that this is a good day to burn and this is a bad day.
Good, good, good.
Ending the day.
Okay. Councillor Lajeness, any follow up? Questions?
Oh, pass.
Okay, councillor St Pierre?
Uh, yes, something did come up. First, just based on what councillor Vetta was saying, if you have a pamphlet, I would suggest you call it something like SUC Answers All Your Burning Questions, or something along those lines. Put that on the website, too. I just think it'd be kind of fun. The other thing that did come to mind was on our, a lot of people use the, use leaves specifically as compost, as mulch. It's actually considered gold in almost anybody's garden if they're actually growing things. And one of the worst and most egregious forms of burning is just burning wet leaves, which produces tons of smoke. So I'm curious as to whether or not a little bit of education could be provided to residents and maybe link up possibly with the community gardens for drop off spots. Because people at the gardens would really appreciate the leaves, as long as they were managed in some sort of reasonable sort of way. But having a drop off specifically for leaves, which really should never be burned, but some people just don't have a garden. So they have, they have no use for them. But if they could be convinced of the value and maybe have them picked up or dropped off somewhere, that might be nice. The other thing that did come to mind was simply, and it looks like you're pushing that direction anyway, is that it seems like an education campaign for the public in terms of simply asking people to be aware of the air and encouraging people to change their behavior without having to change the bylaws. So simply encouraging people to burn less and be more careful about their burning. And I'm hoping we'll be doing some of that. And I'm sure you're on it. Just going to throw that out there. Thank you so much.
In response to comments to councillor St Pierre is, one of the effective things we did in October was, if you may recall, the information bulletin we put out there as far as respecting the air quality. And if, if smoke is being a nuisance, please be mindful and to limit the amount of burning and only burn if you absolutely have to. And the positive things we saw was from that was more people calling in. And I think there was an actual move with some residents to actually respect that. There, to answer your other comments about wet leaves, I expect this is where we cross paths with, you know, fire bylaw and a need for a solid waste management strategy. And I expect those types of questions to be answered as far as mulching and composting and solid waste and what could go to a drop off site, et cetera.
Thank you.
Okay, just a final comment for me is I, I appreciate the report. I think where God confusing and why there's complaints is when you're in the SSA, these rules apply. When you're outside, they don't. And then over the years, the sewer specified area has changed. So then now areas that were once more, you know, like they've just moved around and some have stayed the same. So I was talking, you know, to where my dad lives and he's not in the sewer specified area, but all of his neighbors or most of them are. And we were just having a conversation about his wood stove. And I said, well, technically he could actually burn outside on all these days. He doesn't. But it just shows that because he's not in the sewer specified area, and they just assume that he is. And then certainly in the areas of whiff and spit and billing sit, the air really sits and it gets really heavy and thick. So even I've received complaints with the burning and videos just showing just how toxic it is. Certainly around the province, there's been a lot of information about this. And I think as we move forward, it would be good to share even the health impact. So I have some elected peers that are in the interior and they go out and they're trying to address this as well, because having all the wood smoke is basically taking two years off your life because the damage it's doing to your lungs. So it, you know, as you get older, every year is important. So it's something that you think about, right? Further also is the impact it's having on children. So even through my work here with the primary health working services group is just talking about the respiratory ailments arising in children and how they differ from those in Victoria. And it's some have said that it's because of the, the smoke that is coming in. So it's just something of, you know, people say they have said they have a right to burn while others have a right to good health and clean air. So it's striking a balance. We do have really nice weather in October and we have wonderful weather in May. So I support the change in the seasons from November 1st to April 30th. Counselor Bateman said that's seven clear months there. That you have more months than, 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 than to burn than those actually have of clean air and, and so forth. So I appreciate this and just also working with what we haven't had to date though, is the waste management strategy. So how then do you get rid of things and, and move things or repurpose and reuse them? And there's a lot of learning. And I think this is a really unique time to learn because with more folks at home having spare time to get backyard gardening going, just how can we reuse items around our property in, in ways that, that would only benefit our gardens and so forth? So there's some great opportunities in there. Okay, so we have here, I'm just turning to the right page, the staff report. And I'm not on the right page, so I'll go to that. So there's sort of three recommendations. So we'll go through them one at a time. And one is that the committee, the whole recommends to council that staff be directed to amend the Fire Protection Services bylaw number 292-2007, that reflects council's review and selection of the preferred amendment option. So that would be, okay, there's something.
Could I move staff recommendation, option one?
Yes, thank you, councillor Bateman. And as there's no second or, I'll just maybe just make a sound if you want to speak. Okay, so I think that's clear. So we're talking about option one, just so everyone's clear. Anyone opposed to option one? Okay, so that carries unanimously. The second one is that the committee of the whole recommends to council. So this one is on the statutory days. So would anyone like to test a motion here? Now we're deciding, should we allow backyard burning or should we not on statutory holidays? The commentary, as I understood it from the chief, is getting the appropriate resources out to deal with complaints. And that is a challenge when we're dealing with a competent department and a lot of volunteers who also deserve days off. Sounds like I'm motivating. Would anyone like to move a motion here?
Sounds like councillor Betos would like to speak.
Counselor Betos?
Uh, yes, I, I would like to move a motion that we should still allow burning on statutory holidays until we get our waste management report in and giving people other alternatives. I know it won't sit well with everybody, but I'd like to leave it as it is for the moment and then review it once we know what we're doing on the, the waste management side. So I'll make that motion should be committed on statutory holiday.
Okay, so councillor Betos has moved it so that the committee of the whole recommends to council staff be directed to amend the Fire Protection Services bylaw number 292-2007 to state that backyard burning should be permitted on statutory holidays. Okay, so I'll see if anyone wants to speak on this. The motion that is live is should. And I'm just, I can't see everyone, so I'm just going to go in alphabetical order. Please say pass if you, you don't need to speak. So say pass accordingly. Counselor Bateman?
Well, I, I spoke earlier on my thoughts on stat holidays, though I would be happier if this amendment stated as, as councillor Betos originally stated, that this would wait until we get our waste management plan settled.
Okay, so.
Put that as a condition.
If you want to add that, you could make an amendment and just add on that, maybe a new sentence, that this will be reviewed when the waste management bylaw comes forward.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, by the way. If, if there's a way for me to go back and amend my motion, since we only got the one motion, no second or, I'd be happy to put that comment in for councillor Bateman, if that's, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That I would consider that friendly then, because it is something that councillor Betos had raised.
Yeah, I think I said that, but I don't.
Yeah. It, it's just, I'm just going now with what's on the screen. So thank you, staff, for typing that in. Counselor LaGenes, any comments? Nope. Counselor St Pierre?
Yeah, I'd like to make a quick comment, I guess. I think we've heard a lot about, you know, from councillor Bateman, that we've gotten many, many days, lots of weekends. We've had complaints from, from tourists and you, you discussed, you know, the health implications. I, I'm not sure that we, we actually need, in terms of people clearing their yard waste to have those extra days. And I, I suspect that those are days when more people are going to be at risk because they're more available to have the smoke in their lungs. And at the same time, we have more trouble actually providing oversight and, you know, bylaw enforcement and so on and so forth. So I'm not sure that this is the best direction to go. I don't know that I would necessarily oppose, because I do think that reviewing it afterwards is a good plan. But I suspect it's not necessarily doing anybody any real service in terms of time that they absolutely need to get their burning done. Whereas I think it may actually be tipping on the side of causing potentially definitely more in the way of health issues. So I, yeah, I guess that's my thought.
Thank you, councillor St Pierre. I'm sort of torn on this one. I, I, you know, there's two things. Number one, I, I like the amendment to see that it's going to be that we would do it once the yard waste. So it's a more supportable to me with the yard waste alternative added in. However, I, I don't, I tend not to support it because of the impact on our resources that we don't have and the ability to address things in a timely manner for those that are being exposed. But I suppose we could also have people burning, it could be a stat day, a bad day to burn, and people are going to burn anyway. Like, I think those that try to do it responsibly are more, are, consider that. And then we have people burning garbage whenever the heck they want, whenever they want. And those are the more problematic ones. So whether it's stat date or not, it's still a drain on our resources when people feel they can just go and burn their garbage and their couches and whatever crap they have outside. It just, it's, it's sort of, so that's where it's, I don't want to have the responsible owners curtailed because of someone that's just doing whatever heck they like. And I really hope that there's good fines imposed on those individuals burning garbage. Counselor Betos? I see your hand now.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to make a comment on the, I do understand the other councillors' comments on, on, you know, the stat holiday, but I like to keep it simple stupid. And basically, if you have a hodgepodge of days, you can and cannot do it. Half the people won't remember. And I'm a little concerned about our staff, our fire department getting calls out on those stat holidays, because basically the neighbor just didn't know he's on a day off or she's on a day off. So I'd like to keep it simple, that you can burn between November and April. And it doesn't matter whether it's a staff holiday or Tuesday or Wednesday, until we get some other alternative. And I'm more than happy to look at it further when that alternative comes in. But I'd rather keep it simple now. This is the days you can do it, without exception, November to April, and let it go at that.
Thank you, councillor Betos. That's good rationale. And the other part, too, is just, I'm starting to hear from some folks, it's the challenge of trying to enact or create new direction in the middle of COVID when we can't do, when it's really hard to engage with the public right now. So doing something incremental, even though there's negative consequences, may lead to a stronger outcome potentially. Counselor LaGenes, I see your hand is up, according to the team's function.
Yeah, I just, I, I agree. I think, I don't think we should limit, limited any more than, than we have by including the stat holidays, just because there are very few days, like I, I watch the Venting Index quite regularly to see when I can and cannot burn. And there are very few days that, that the Venting Index is good. And so if you, I mean, it needs to be a day when you're available to actually to perform the burn. And by restricting it only to good and only on regular weekend days, it is quite limiting.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Staff, can you just share the screen again, please? Just so we all, we can all see it. Uh, okay. So we're all clear. So we're doing just the first one then. So I'm going to call the question on this and ask for anyone in opposition. Anyone opposed? Please say opposed. So I'm hearing nobody. So that carries unanimously. Okay. And the last part here is on the committee, the whole recommends to council that staff be directed to amend the Fire Protection Services bylaw number 292-2007, section 35.8, to indicate that 10 acres converts to four hectares. What is that? Sorry, can somebody please mute? I'm hearing like a drumbeat. Thank you. So this, this has no consequence. This is just conversion? Chief, is that correct? It's just conversion, right? 10 hect, 10 acres is four hectares. That's, that's a fact. There's no, depending on which system.
I lost all sound.
Okay, well, we can hear you, councillor St Pierre.
That is correct, your worship. This is a simple housekeeping item.
Okay. So would someone like to move this? Counselor Betos, thank you. So this is, is just metric and how folks measure? Okay, so anyone in opposition, please say opposed. And hearing no sounds, that carries unanimously. Okay, so that covers off our three items. These will all go forward to regular council. And I would encourage you to reach out, make some phone calls, talks to, talk to folks that you know that, that maybe do have more rural properties so that they're aware of, of what's coming. And also for those that have been adversely impacted, I think this is maybe some good news for them that we're acknowledging their concerns and, and moving forward. Seeing that there is no new business, I just want to ask staff, how many folks are tuned in on YouTube?
Uh, your worship, we are not using YouTube as there is nobody in the room to video stream. We do have our live stream running, but we are unable to see at the moment how many people are tuned in. That's a stat that we can get later.
Okay, so from my understanding, because the, because the YouTube would go through our fixed camera into the room of which we're not there. But then this way, this, what I'm seeing on the screen, the MST screen is what would be, is what anyone dialing into our live feed would see? Would that be correct?
That's correct. Everything that I have been sharing is what has been gone fed through the live stream.
Okay, that's really good. Thank you.
After the meeting is over.
Okay, got, got it. Thank you. Okay, so seeing that that brings us to the end of today's agenda. So thank you very much, council, for meeting virtually. Chief Mount, for all of your reports. Staff for bearing with us as always. And I just want to wish you all good health and be safe. And, and thanks for everything. I'll now ask a member of council to please move that the November 16, 2020 committee, the whole be adjourned.
So moved.
Moved by councillor Bateman. And there you all are. And I will call the question, is anyone opposed to adjourning? Would you like to still keep meeting? It's great to see you all. So I'll consider that we are adjourned and be well. Thank you, everyone. Take good care. Thank you, staff.
Thanks, everyone.